Chairman, would you like me to address you from the podium or would you like me to support?
For the podium is good for the microphone.
All right, thanks. Not problem.
That's right there. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Phil Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner, a law firm of Tobin, Carver, and New London, Connecticut. My address is 43 Broad Street in that city. It's always a pleasure to appear before this board and it's nice to see everyone here tonight. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Odd Fellows Home of Connecticut Incorporated. As you know, it's the owner and the operator of the Fairview Residential Light Care Community, which is located at 235 Wester Town Road, Kirn Drive. For the record, I was retained subsequent to the opening of the public hearing last month on this variance application, but I have reviewed the minutes of that hearing and I'm pleased to be here with you tonight to supplement my client's legal arguments. As you're aware, my client has submitted an application to the board for a variance of section 5.1-8.8i subsection 8 of the zoning regulations for relief of the typical 40-foot building height maximum for residential light care communities in residential homes. Joining me tonight is Chief Executive Officer Billy Nelson. I also have Jay Liotti with Fairview. Also joining me tonight, I have Brian Phillips with Langton Engineering, and I have Eric Harmon with AG Architecture. We'll be presenting you revised plans this evening. We're going to try to be really brief tonight because you did have a whole public hearing last month. But we want to be responsive to some of the board's comments and suggestions that were made at last month's hearing. We do have a revised plan set that we'd like to share with you. As you know, at last month's hearing, my client shared with you how Fairview caters to the senior community here in Rotten through its established skilled nursing facility and by providing a variety of independent living options on their existing campus. As you also know, my client is embarking on an exciting new expansion of their campus to complete their continuum of care by adding assisted living and memory care opportunities for the elderly. These new residential options will be served by critically important amenities, common areas, and gathering spaces within a new interlinked complex that's going to be constructed to the north of the current campus. As my client's design professionals explained to you at last month's hearing, the purpose of this variance is to provide relief from the typical building maximum height that's allowed for residential light care communities. So that instead of a sprawling expansion that would occupy much of the undeveloped portion of the site, we could condense the new living facilities and amenities in a compact centralized complex, which would only be slightly taller than what would be normally permitted. The original variance request, as you are aware, was to allow a maximum building height of 62 feet. After receiving public comment and from the board's suggestions, the board requested that my client take another look at the design, try to rework the plans, try to see what we could do to minimize the impact of the taller buildings to the surrounding neighborhood and come back this month to continue the discussion. I'm happy to report that my client took the board's direction to heart. Its design professionals have worked very hard over the last month to redesign the project and really minimize the requested variance to the absolute minimum. Tonight, we'll be presenting the revised plans to you, which now reduce the maximum building height and what our request is tonight of the new complex to 55 feet. More importantly, the portion of the new complex which actually reaches this revised height has also been minimized and moved central to the site, while the portions of the complex that are closest to our neighbors, especially to the east or the Navy housing, have been kept at or below the standard 40-foot height limitation. Further, we've made these changes without any further encroachment to the neighborhoods to the north, which we continue to maintain a substantial buffer to. At this point, I'm going to ask Eric Harmon to come up and walk through the design changes paid at your request, show you how we've reduced the maximum building height, how we rearranged the buildings on the site, and effort to be sensitive to our neighbors, to the community. When Eric's done, I'll come back. Just highlight the legal basis for the hardship request, the variance that's requested. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. I have some updated plans, which were submitted, but I'd like to lay them out for you.
Yeah.
And I wish you... Your name is?
Dan.
My name is Eric Harmon. I am the Chief Design Officer at AG Architecture, and our address is 1414 Underwood Avenue, Walwatos, Wisconsin. The most... Slide that little gesture to your manager. Let's start with these two pages up for you. There we go. Hopefully, the microphone is still able to hear me well, and I will speak up the best I can for you as well. As I mentioned, I am Eric Harmon, the Chief Design Officer at AG Architecture, and I apologize for not being able to make it to the last meeting as I have been intimately involved in the design of the project, but unfortunately, we had scheduled a vacation at a quarterly timed event and wasn't able to attend. But I also was able to go back and watch the video and get some takeaways from the meetings. And as Billy walked away from the meeting last time, he pulled the entire team together and the architectural team, the civil, and the development consultant, we all came back to town and really sat down and had a day-long charrette event where we dove into the plans and really identified what were Fairview's core mission and vision to this project and how we can make some adjustments to still meet that, while also being more accommodating to the requesting comments made. So it's overall aesthetically, the appearance of the plan in just the planned form is a relatively similar layout. We still have the front door facing back to the main campus. This was one of the talking points at the last meeting about ADA accessibility and access to the front door. And we still strongly believe that the front door of this campus and the addition that we're adding wants to be centrally located and facing the existing property and the existing structures on site. This is not because we don't recognize that the residential homes down the hill and up the hill have to traverse some grade, but we respect the Odd Fella Home Road as the primary access to the site. And we're able to really have a continuous elevation from the front door of the site off of Lester Town coming to our main campus. The new development will have all of the amenities to serve all residents, but if those amenities are directly accessible from that main thoroughfare, it'll make them more readily available to everybody on campus because the goal of this is to create a community, bring everybody together, whether they're living in the new structure or the old. So we don't want elevation to be a hindrance to that sense of community and that sense of place that the residents can have together. On that main floor are all the amenities that were mentioned last time. The dining locations, there'll be several dining restaurant options, the fitness wellness clinic, the outpatient rehab, access to memory care, assisted living, and the independent living areas will all come from that main access. We want that to be as connected as possible. With that as one of the main goals that still came out of our regrouping and shred process, we went back and looked at what if we were a two-story structure and we really took over more of the site? That got back to the walking distances and the challenges of modern senior living community. As people age in place and residents live in these environments for longer, walking and the ability to circumvent corridors within the building footprint become a critical component, not only to the marketability, but to the livelihood or the activity that happens within the building. So industry standard, we really don't want to exceed anything greater than 500 feet for a walkability standpoint. And what we've laid out now, our worst-case scenario is right at about 450 feet. So we're already pushing the limits for how long we want these residents to walk. So if we were to go to a two-story plan that started to take over more of the site, we would likely be, well, we wouldn't likely, likely be, we would absolutely be exceeding those industry norms and impacting the population of the campus. So that, those two pieces, the front door and the walkability, really were the central focus of the overall layout. And with that kind of reconfirmed, we wanted to go back and really understand what we could do to redesign to meet the request made and really find a compromise that we could work within. And we feel like we've really done that in really changing how the building works from that common area entry. As you come in that front door, which is generally at grade with the existing amenities, you'll have all the commons for footage. We're looking at about 30,000 square feet of commons. And from there, we will actually go up a floor to get to the first floor of residence across the overall campus. From that point, we have a three-story structure. That three-story structure sits on top of the commons and then heads to the east. And as you work our way up the hill, that three-story structure is what's presenting to the neighboring development in the Navy housing. So that is 39 foot six for that measurement at that point. As we're closest to our neighboring residential area, which is showing over here on this up. That three-story structure will have parking below it, but that parking is completely below grade and the commons area will actually access that to the elevators where they can go up a floor. The next step in that, once we really defined that three-story structure and used the height of that structure at the top of the grade, we looked then at the rest of the campus. We've got about a 60-foot grade change from the top point of the campus to the lowest point. So we had the three-story form, and if we were just to take that three-story form all the way to the western edge of the new development, we would be back exceeding that 60-foot elevation. And we really determined that that wasn't the right move. Even if we relocated the highest point, having that height in the plan was not part of our goals and aspirations for redevelopment. So what you're looking at now, as you work your way west and head towards the river, we do have a four-story component of the building that is four stories of residential, and it's actually stepping down a grade level. So the commons on that edge of the building is actually a floor above our lowest level of units. So we're starting to take advantage of that grade, and as the grade drops down, we're dropping the commons in and then we're dropping a lower level of units within there. If that makes sense, what we've done is basically taken the highest point of the site, which previously housed the tallest portion of the building, and eliminated that wing altogether. We set this as a three-story structure instead of a four-story slash five-story structure. That's generally two stories off the highest point. And we relocated that height to the lower point on the site. And we've done that intentionally. So now, as we come and request a four-story structure, it is centralized in the development and not facing the residential and not really impacting any residences surrounding us or the existing campus, but in fact, really working with the overall grade that we have on this side. I'll slide this revised site section over. I want to show these two site sections next to each other. I think they're critical to the discussion of where we were last time and where we are today, even more so than the plan changes. It's the change in the overall roof line that you saw before. So the gray section shown in the section on the right represents the former roof line of this building. So where we had the 62-foot request in that location is now a building that comes in under the 40 feet. That's a substantial change in organization of the building and overall requests. Where we then come across to the commons, you can see the commons is a four-story structure where the three stories of residential sits over the top of the commons amenities that brings the entire campus together. And then from that point on, the building actually steps down. So instead of carrying that four foot or that four-story structure across, you step down as the great steps down, so the structure goes from five to four stories. So in no location are we currently asking for a five-story structure, which we were during our last submission. And now, in lieu of having the tallest structure closest to the adjacent of the residences, we now have a most centralized. The last thing that I want to touch on is some additional information that might have been helpful during the last meeting, but we did not have it available to us. And that is individual building section that go through each of the components, each of the wings of the campus. And this is where you can see that commons area. Again, this is where all the amenities are. This is where the community comes together. This is where we're establishing our front door. As the grave climbs up the hillside and works its way to the east, this is that three-story structure with a pitched roof. Parking is completely below grade. That's the 39.6. The grave fling that's coming across, this is all in assistance. That's at 101.7. The elevation of our first floor of units is at 116 that comes across here. And now you can see in the relationship how we have stepped down this floor a bit of that way. So the 55 feet that's distinguished here, you can see, is truly lower from sea level than the 39.6, the rest of our... And then the last comment that really wasn't discussed too much, but is also coming back to the site and is over here in this U shape, that is the assisted living component. And that is also a three-story structure that measures at 45 feet, under the 55, and happens to match the height of the existing fellowship hall on campus. So overall, the site plan has significantly changed. We've eliminated wings that were the most challenging. We've kept Fairview's core goal of how the building and site wants to operate, and we've limited the length of distances that anybody needs to travel, while also really lowering the building. I know it doesn't, you know, drive it, but from a sea level standpoint, we've taken two stories of height out of this building and really worked it onto the site different. So what we still have, the four-story structure, it has lowered them. I think that was the main points. Billy, want to come back up?
Sure. We'll certainly make ourselves available for questions at the end of our presentation. I know Tom's running to see if he can make some copies of the plans for people in the audience to be able to see the changes that I've made. You know, that's important. Before we conclude tonight, I just want to take a few minutes, discuss the legal basis for the requested variance. And I am aware that my client did present arguments last month regarding ADA accessibility, site planning, and clean space considerations in support of the variance request, but I'd like to take an opportunity tonight to supplement those arguments with some additional information. First, as you know, one of the most basic tests in granting a variance is whether there exists a physical hardship or exceptional difficulty that applies to property owner of the reasonable use of their property once the regulations are applied. And this property is unique. I think the green, the site plan that you have in front of you demonstrate that. It is unique to the surrounding R12 district. It is by far the largest parcel within the district. It's centrally located and it is really the only parcel with any substantial vacant area left in the district. It is completely surrounded on all sides by dense residential development or to the west by military highway, rail line, and things like that. It's important to note that Fairview has been in operation since 1892, well before the advent of zoning. And it has a legal right to both grow and evolve as it continues to carry out its nonprofit mission, provides senior housing and healthcare services. However, the 70 or nearly 70-acre parcel that's shown on that site plan is not flat. It's not a perfect rectangle. Much of the western half of that site sloping down through the river is steep and has exceptionally difficult topographies. In fact, over a portion of that slope, the town has already taken a conservation easement over it during the previous development phase of the project. Further, on the northern end of the site, which is currently forested, that portion of the site protrudes like a peninsula into the existing single-family neighborhood in the north. The development of that area, which is theoretically possible without any variances at all, would necessarily be right next to single-family homes along Lewis Street. The bottom line is that both the western and the northern portions of the property are either restricted for reasonable development, or if they were developed, would directly impinge upon long-established single-family neighborhoods. These physical constraints of the site in this unique configuration naturally direct development to the central portion of the site where the proposal is before you tonight, and that's to obtain a reasonable use of the property. To get that reasonable use, a height variance is warranted as it allows us to minimize the overall profit of disturbance on the site and instead, centralize the development and increase the vertical dimension of development to get the same level of use. Second, my client has provided a good deal of information, particularly last month, on the absolute necessity of having the new complex of living units and the associated amenities be ADA accessible. You heard from our architect tonight reinforcing that argument. As you know, ensuring ADA accessibility is a critical consideration. It's the law. But particularly for the senior population, where they have, many of them have qualifying mobility disabilities. Proposed height variance is essential to provide proper grades and accessible pathways, and you heard Eskimo did that effect tonight. It would not be possible in a more expansive and spread-out development on the site, which would result if my client can't build up a roof with it. This complex that's before you tonight, which has been revised, as we've discussed, is designed for free and accessible movement for residents between the various buildings of the complex, both horizontally and also vertically through elevator cores. You never have to go outside if you live in that building. You never have to battle snow and ice on a walkway. You don't have to climb stairs. You don't have to surmount a hill in a wheelchair, which some residents have to do today in other portions of this site. Most importantly though, this complex is not just residences for the elderly, but also residents for the legally disabled. And many of the amenities will provide critically important ADA accessible healthcare services and community spaces. In addition to the areas like dining rooms, there are social lounges, recreation areas, art studios, and libraries, this complex will also include ADA accessible services such as a fitness center, an indoor pool used for therapy, a wellness clinic, areas for rehab services, including physical, occupational, and speech therapy, bases for doctors, nursing, and home care services. These accessible amenity spaces, which will literally serve the needs of dozens, if not hundreds, of disabled residents at Fairview, are integral parts of a vibrant senior living community, and they truly allow the people who live there to live their best lives. And the reason I bring this up is that tonight, and on behalf of my client, I want to supplement our variance application by seeking a reasonable accommodation from you under both the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. A request for a reasonable accommodation is a separate legal basis for the granting of a variance above and beyond the typical hardship test that you usually weigh. As a provider of housing and services to qualified persons with recognized disabilities, Fairview may legally avail itself to both federal acts on behalf of both its current and future residents. That's what we're doing here tonight. The town of Rotten is a local government. Both it and its various boards and commissions are subject provisions of these federal acts. Residents of Fairview with a recognized disability, by reason of that disability, cannot be denied the benefits and services of programs and activities of the town or be subject to discrimination by the town based on disability. It's been well-established in our federal courts that the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act apply to local zoning regulation. And local government entities are required to make, quote, "reasonable accommodations" to provide qualified individuals with equal opportunities to receive the benefits from and participate in the programs run by such entities, including zoning regulations. Ultimately, zoning boards and appeals like this board are required as a matter of federal law to make reasonable modifications to their zoning regulations to avoid discrimination where those modifications do not result in an undue financial or administrative burden to the town or would not fundamentally alter the town's overall zoning scheme. I would submit to you that our application as before you falls within this established guideline. If the height variance that we've requested and reduced it from 62 to 55 feet tonight is denied, current and future disabled residents of Fairview could be deprived accessible access to housing and services, and that would constitute discrimination. More importantly though, the requested variance, which is really now just 15 feet in size, creates no undue financial or administrative burden to this town. It doesn't fundamentally alter your zoning scheme. I would note that section 5.1-8.8i subsection 8 already allows for the modification of typical height standards in certain situations and providing additional relief here in this particular situation. On the facts of this particular case and this particular site, this is what the ZDA does, certainly does not undermine the overall town's own scheme. Finally, I would submit, absent the relief sought, my clients would be deprived reasonable use of their property. The relief that was been requested after careful review and reworking by our architects is the minimum necessary to achieve the desired use of the property. And we obviously reduced our original request based on your input. Based on distinct physical hardships I've identified and overlayed with the request for reasonable accommodation under those two federal acts, I would submit to you that the requested variance should be granted tonight. I want to thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Certainly would be happy to answer any questions you have. I think there's some additions, some handouts provided to the public as well. We're here and available if you would like to have a dialogue on any of that, but we would reserve... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? You, when you talked to us about the requirements of the ADA.
Yes.
What specifically does the statute say and what is the case law say as to accommodation?
Accommodation says that you must, you must consider reasonable accommodations through your zoning code where failure to provide those accommodations may result in people with disabilities being deprived access to services for the disabled. And in this situation, we are a light care community that caters to elderly people, many of which have recognized disabilities. And the law says that even though... And the law says that even though we're not those people, as the provider of those services on their behalf, we can come before you and ask for reasonable accommodation. When we ask for it, you have to make a determination in light of all the circumstances we put forward. Is what we're asking for, an additional fifteen feet at a location central to the site? Is that reasonable to give the future and current residents of Fairview access to the facilities and the services they need to be disabled? You also have to look at, if you do, if you give us that variance, you have to look at, does it create a financial or administrative burden to the town? If you found that it did, you could say no. And then you could also have to look at whether by granting it, would it undo the entire zoning scheme? Would it undermine what you're trying to do as a town from a zoning perspective? And I would submit fifteen feet in this particular location based on these circumstances certainly wouldn't unravel the entire zoning scheme.
Other question. Did I read the zoning rates? The, the height requirement in, in this zone is thirty feet. Then section that you cited to us grants an additional ten feet based upon uh, trade-offs, setbacks and other thing.
Yes.
So essentially for that zone, you'll want a twenty-five foot variance rather than what you're saying is fifteen. At least the way I see it.
Yes.
I'll see the zoning rate.
True, however, it's for a particular use. So it's not as if you could give a variance here and then we could sort of play switcheroo on you. And say like, I want to build, I want to build fancy houses now. It's only for a life care facility and like the residential life care facilities can go up to forty feet under that section that we cited.
I have noticed.
Yeah.
But, but I'm looking at it in terms of the, the entire neighborhood that's zoned for thirty feet foot elevation. And from, from the perspective of the neighbors and everything, the, the height is exceeds thirty feet by twenty-five in the, in the maximum. Voice, and the question is whether we, we decide that's, uh, qualifies to a variance.
You're absolutely right. And, and that was one of the reasons though, that really drove our redesign because it's the issue of impact to neighbors. So as the architect commented, in the original design that was presented to you last month, our tallest buildings were closest to the Navy housing. And so the issue that you said, that you're bringing up, the concern is paramount. And so when you, when I think at least one member of this board, and I couldn't speed in the minutes, but um, at least one member of the board said, hey, can you take a second look at this? And so what we did is where we are abutting the perimeter, where we're close to those neighbors, we tapped it at thirty-nine point five feet, just under the, the forty foot. And it shifted the area that has to go up to fifty-five feet as far away from the neighbors as possible. And, and so the idea was to address the very concern that you're raising.
No, I, I recognize that and then it was one of the better than what the other one. But we, when we move on to another point. When, when you're advocating for, uh, for ADA very, you know, to, to affect the variance.
For their use more.
You're advocating for both current residents and potential residents.
That's correct.
Don't, you don't, you have no connection with this one. Just people that you hope to sell the particular apartments to so that they can live there.
Yes.
So you're making an argument for people that, that don't exist at this.
They exist, but we don't have them identified at this. However, um, part of the continuum of care concept is that you can move into this community and have true independent living. As you age and your health deteriorates, you don't have to go to another facility. You can stay on site.
So maybe I, I'm, I'm fully aware of what this community does.
I guess what I'm saying is we've sort of identified some of the population. They're living here right now, right? And they will eventually shift here. Will other people from outside also be? Absolutely. And, and we're allowed to, under the ADA, advocate for those future customers or future residents.
Presumably right now, your facility is ADA compliant for all your residents.
The skilled nursing facility is, there are areas of our site that are more difficult. So for example,
The independent living down.
Independent down, living below. I, I had heard an anecdote from, from Mr. Nelson that he's got, uh, a resident in one of those buildings that's fully wheelchair bound, a motorized wheelchair. And so the slope, there is a nice sidewalk that goes up, but that's not, that's not an ADA accessible sidewalk. And certainly in inclement weather, that's a concern. It would be much better for our people with true mobility disabilities like, like him to have that location in an area which doesn't have that kind of slope. All really good questions.
Um, okay, Wes.
I guess the first thing is this is a sign which we both look on. Say you know what the requirement yet side of the line.
Answer that. So absolutely. And, and I think as, as our architect testified, there is another design for this project. And it's lower buildings spread out to the north for the single family neighborhood. But there are major problems with that. One is, is that you have these long stretches and we talked about the, the applicable walking distance or the proper walking distance for these. You're going to stretch that out. You're going to consume more land and you have to deal with all the ADA rates throughout. But what we said is yes, there is a possible design that might comply, but it is not, in our opinion, the best or the, the, the right design for this project. And that's because this property is restricted on where you can really build and you have this sort of extension to the north. It is that unique physical configuration that gives us the right to come in and say, hey, we would like to have some relief because we think we can make a better project. A project that meets our needs better and meets the needs of our future residents better, particularly the ones with disabilities by seeking relief from it. Yeah, we're absolutely one hundred percent aware of what the regulations said. There's a reason we're here because the design we put forward, we think is, is a superior design for both ourselves and our future residents.
Yes, the other question I have. Thank you. This is the height on the stage. The section.
Yep. You'll see, you'll see on that, I tried to talk last night, I think, uh, you see that these different wings have different heights. You'll see that no height is bigger than fifty-five. And these are the centrally located buildings. This is the building that's closest to the Navy housing to the east. It's under the forty feet.
You were able to bring it down.
We shifted, but we not only brought it down, but we rotated everything away from the rest.
And you moved that others, you, there was something on.
Yes.
Back there, you moved that over there.
Exactly. And so we shifted everything down here to address the concern that Mr. Smith raised is, hey, I'm, I'm in our well district, the height is thirty. Now theoretically, I could have something twenty-five feet taller. Well, it is going to be twenty-five feet taller than the thirty. Let's get it as far away from the house.
This bit of additional property that's adjacent. Right.
Yes.
It's non-compliant. Number floors.
It is, it's, it's non-compliant.
I'm looking at this. One's name. Jason. Fifty-five. That's floors. Here.
That's a, that's a very good question. And I think the site plan and the building section do a wonderful job of depressing, I can say. What we're looking at right here is this wing of the building, which is closest to the Navy housing. This is the truly three-story structure with below grade parking. So that parking is fully below ground. And the residence, that's this, that is that wing. That's closest to the residence. And if we take a look at this section, you can actually see the depiction of the Navy housing here, the thirty-three foot height of the top of that roof. You can see that now that we've made this change, the entirety of the building is actually lower than the residential that's adjacent. But that particular section location is a place where it's closest to this residence.
Would you show Mr. Manning of this plant where this wing is? No, that's, I think that's where he's.
So now what's happening across the site is the, uh, elevation is descending down towards the river, but it's very high, descending in this direction. So by the time we get to this grade and have level access to the rest of the site, we are lower, lower here everywhere at this loc- this location. So now this line that you're seeing kind of go continuous through this section. All of these sections are true, truly in line for how they live in the building. So as the grade has dropped away, that commons area is now slid under the three-story structure to allow for that at-grade accessible access to all of it. As we work our way from this wing, which now has the same top of roof line all the way to the common level. So the building doesn't get any taller. It just gets pushed into the ground a little bit more instead of getting any higher. Now we turn the corner and we extend to this one. And this wing is again a four-story structure. But instead of keeping the same roof line where now it would all of a sudden becoming taller, we have pushed this entire building down because the grade, as we're out here by the road, the grade is another twelve feet lower than it was at this point. Because the whole site is very rapidly, uh, declining. But if we were to follow this line straight across, this would become a five or a six story building, which is why we stepped it down.
All right. And yes, but I'm taking going really this is compliant.
Correct.
And because you have a certain number of floors that you can put in independent dwelling. We even aren't. So especially when it's around the morning to this.
What we've done with that building is we have taken advantage of the grade falling away. Have been able to put all of the common amenities, all of the resources underneath those same three stories.
That's that yellow one there. Just those can't be that accessible.
Especially what I think you're kept line pretty close. While measuring parking this shot forty feet. Got you, I am one of them. All of them. That's what I'm more parking, more that means to people. Okay.
That, what it is, is we, we can fit this extra level here because the ground we have more room. But you're, what you said before is right. This is what's kept. This top is, when you look at this plan here. Look at the top. Even though there's more levels in this part. How can we do that? Because the ground itself falls away. And so this plan was a better job of building the building into the site and taking advantage of the photography to make it a smaller building. That has a direct impact on overall impact. This is a, I think this is a better plan in that it has the idea of trying to work within that.
I can echo that. We showed it in this section. Uh, because it is important to show where we were during the last residential operations, uh, that we made that were fairly significant. And it is tough to see, but this gray line signifies the former height section.
That's the design from last.
So this was the previous design that we talked about and where we were requesting that height variant was here. So that was directly impacted the neighbors and you can see that it was actually higher than the neighboring roof line. So hearing, you know, the, the voices of the team last, last month and going back to figure out how we can modify this uh, as a state, instead of almost fighting the brick, really this building footprint was actually getting taller as it stepped up. We eliminated these two stories of the building and really set this three-story structure as our data line to go across. So that became the driver, the three-story, uh, building that meets the urgency and the requirements became the driver of the wish that we were not going to go above at any point in the building. In fact, we stepped down rather.
This is the only
Correct. The way, when we talk about a building, uh, we're really referring to this entirety. This entire development, we're referring to as a building. Uh, from a construction standpoint, it will end up being, uh, different construction techniques and different buildings from a folk standpoint. But when we refer to the height of the overall building, our worst case scenario for like the fifty-five we requested is this location. None of these areas are any higher. In fact, at this point, you have the three stories. So when we make that request, we make that request for the entire view, the new.
Yes. Last thing is we really, our job is which I'll do seven.
Basis, legal basis for our.
Like you'd articulate. We should listen.
So, so so just to restate what I said before, we put forward that there is a physical hardship that exists on the site based on the topography drawn on those plans that slopes down and away. Puzzled with that topography, fact that the town is restricted to development, some of the western portion of the site provides us no room to build within that area. And then also the configuration of the northern end of the site has that peninsula of land going into the neighborhood. It is the physical condition, topography, uh, conservation restriction and shape of the lot. It creates a physical hardship that directs the development central to the site and vertically rather than outward. And that's the basis, the physical basis of hardship. I would say also though, under Connecticut law, this org, there are other bases, bases for hardship. For example, the elimination of a non-commodity is a basis independent for a hardship under Connecticut law. In addition, reasonable accommodation under the ADA and the Fair Housing Act is a basis to grant a variance under Connecticut law. So there are other reasons to get variances beyond the typical hardship test. We provided you a hardship test and then we buttress that with a reasonable accommodation. Rose.
Well, I think you've made a more compelling case than what we presented before. I don't have to live with it. I'd like to hear what some of the neighbors have to say about it.
We're available if you have any additional questions. Can we just reserve right of the book, sorry.
When you say Connecticut law reasonable accommodation.
Reasonable accommodations for the ADA to be a hardship. Is that, is that case law or statute or what is?
Yeah, case law. And, and it's, it's mostly, most of the cases are in the federal courts. So there's a federal, it's a federal issue. These are federal acts. So there's a variety of cases here in Connecticut about towns that through their zoning regulation prohibited reasonable accommodation for people with disabilities. In those cases, you know, almost, you know, across the board, they typically overturn the town. In their failure to accommodate, unless the town has reasonable basis. And so whether it's that reasonable basis, what they're being asked to modify is unreasonable in its nature, in light of all the circumstances. Or if that thing that they want reasonably accommodated to create a burden on the town administratively or financially. Or if what we were asking for completely undeadly zoning scheme undermined. I don't think any of those cases, the, this situation exists in this case. And that's why I think reasonable accommodation is appropriate in this case. Again, in addition to the physical hardship that Mr. Manning has.
But it would seem to me that town-wide standard for our twelve zone of thirty feet is not something that's, that's particularly onerous in its, it began with, so that an ADA challenge would necessarily throw it out.
I think there's testimony in the record though, that you heard from a licensed architect, that the failure to grant variance here would require us to extend the footprint of development, provide for the necessary housing and the amenities. And there are problems with that. Because of grade, the grade that is shown on.
And so when you say necessary, necessary for who? For, for the for the, the way you've envisioned the development?
For the re-
Necessary for.
For the reason of, the reasonable. For the reasonable use of fair views property by Fairview. We, we have a seventy-acre site right there. And you look at the portion of it that's developed right now. This is not a use, for example, that's not permitted in the zone. This is a special permitted use. The only thing we're asking for is some relief simply on the height issue. So I don't think it's unreasonable. If, for example, this was a use that was completely not permitted in this zone. And if what we were asking for was something that was ten or twenty times what the both-in-dimensional requirement would be. You know, I think there's a good case there, that that's an unreasonable request. I think this is, this is a facility that existed prior to zoning. It existed for a hundred and thirty years. Plus, it's allowed by zoning, in the zone. And based on particularly our revised plan, reduce the height, I think it's reasonable in light of all the specs and services. That have been booked for you. That would be my, my submission.
Think this, he's, he's earlier stated about industry standard for maximum distance.
Yeah, so.
That, that's an industry standard or is that an ADA standard?
That's an industry standard, but I think to best correlate kind of the lifestyle of a resident. Uh, in an environment where it's a two-story development and you're traversing a lot of grade. Uh, if you live on the end condition, let's say you're lucky enough to have an end unit with a great view looking in both directions. Marketability wise, it's a fantastic place when you're seventy-five and looking to move in. As you age in place and you've been there for ten years, you're eighty-five and your mobility becomes more challenged. The hurdle that it takes to get to the destination of the amenities, the wellness clinics, fitness, the doctors, the massage appointments. And the sense of community, which is the reason you moved in, whether you're gathering with people who live on the outside of the campus. Everything about a senior living community is bringing those residents together. So as they age in place and they have a tougher time coming to that central location. They lose the benefit of this community and health starts to waver even more. And that's where you start to see heavy declines. People aren't socializing, aren't coming to activities. That's actually a telltale sign that people look for in residents. And when you start to spread the campuses out, those come quicker. So by keeping everything close together and not making somebody walk a quarter mile to get down into the dining. It brings them in and keeps their, uh, like expectancy longer, allows them to enjoy their place of residence. Uh, we, we do a lot of work across the country. We're from the Midwest, so we're Milwaukee-based. But we travel across the country doing this type of work in communities just like yours. And one of the key components is like, we'll talk to the residents. They'll tell me it takes eighteen laps to walk a mile on their pickup or their tractor. That's a great thing because if it takes that many laps, that means that you're not, you know, walking a half mile just to come down to dinner. So that's where the guidelines really tell us, the distance for this resident to walk here. To get to this dining area needs to be something that they can easily traverse if, now if it's a ten-minute walk. So I think that's really where the industry standard overlaps the ADA. From an ADA standpoint. The design of the units, they'll meet Nancy and Fair Housing, the design of corridor and circulation elevators. They'll meet all of the U D requirements to allow them to take advantage of those short walks to get to the building. And then the last thing I'll add is, the, the residents within this existing independent living. There really are not a threshold of amenities within this existing space. Their existing amenities are here in this building. So when people are coming to this point, that's where their current amenities are. What we've done is built off of that elevation. Like I said, that's the driver for that.
Just a whatever. If you, if you were to go to a two-story extended facility. Then presumably you would still keep it at the same grade level of that main street entrance.
Yeah, so.
You've got to have more on cars.
That's where the real challenge comes.
So then the question is walkers, scooters, other, other kinds of things.
Uh, now that, at that point, you're doing more than that. You are designing in rest stations. Along the way. There's, there's historic campuses that we go into that do sprawl. And to make those campuses marketable, we have to design in a spot to sit. To recuperate your energy to travel on, which really decreases the pleasure of traveling through the building. And to the point of, you know, talking about if this is the entry point and we sprawl. From an architectural design, that would be our worst-case scenario. Because that would not centralize the amenities, that would not centralize the connection to residents. That would put everybody in a scenario where they would be traversing from behind the entry further back into the site. The previous master plan, which was part of, uh, where these residents came in, had a site entrance. That was centralized on the highest point of the site. And as we looked architecturally at whether or not that was an appropriate move forward. We determined that the fact that you had to climb up sixty feet of elevation change to get from one dependent living component to the front door and another, really disconnected this campus. So then now it was basically instead of welcoming the entirety of this campus development, turning it back. Say, this is for us, that's for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Questions or comments? Or is that? I'm close there on a basic question.
My name is Robert Shepherd. I live on Sixty-one Lewis Street, Bailey Hill. My property actually intersects corner of Lewis Street and Virgo Drive, which is exactly adjacent to the property to the north. So I guess from my perspective, I appreciate the efforts to try to work inside the existing footprint. As well as reduce the elevation. I, I do appreciate that. My concern is any expansion to the north. Sorry, sorry. My, my concern is any expansion to the north. As I mentioned in a previous meeting that you had here, going onto Bailey Hill through the dead end or up above through, uh, Blair's Drive would be, excuse me, Pegasus Drive. Uh, Bailey Hill is not, could not accommodate that. We have no sidewalks, we have any children, elderly people that walk. It's, it would be a very difficult situation. Uh, so I, I do appreciate working in the footprint, however. Uh, I guess from my perspective, I am opposed to going to the north. That to me is, uh, just does not accommodate our, our, our neighborhood. Uh, question I had was like during the construction period. Where the vehicles are coming from, are they accessing Leicester Town or up through Horizon Drive? How was all the construction vehicles coming up and down during the whole construction period? Again, my concern is the adjacent neighborhoods, but also uh, the potential to break through onto that dead end of Virgo Drive. I have a lot of concerns with any, any construction vehicles, even if it's not a permanent road, if it's temporary. Uh, again, I would be opposed.
I think it's more effective if I go through them all and, so I, I will answer your question. I wrote them all down. Thank you.
Who else?
I'm going to be in the town, can I must be down road and ride? Uh, before I start, I just wanted to say that I have put some comments together after the previous meeting, which about the sixty-two foot, um, request. Actually now it's fifty-five feet is the maximum, really only seven feet difference, so. Perspective, um, and I did reference a fool, I have to say, but these are pictures of the development at Walker, the Walker Hill. Uh, where the school is, the four-story building. The district perspective, these pictures are great, but this is like real-time photos. All types of, of four-story building really is in the neighborhood. Um, I also, before I started, I also, um, provided by one of the neighbors. Fairview's plan from two thousand and eleven, a publication that was sent in for some of the neighbors. Where they, um, speak of their master plan for the development of two hundred and sixty-one senior housing units on the seventy-acre campus. Is one being twenty-three villas along with a recreational building and a school. Built around a town green. Um, so basically, you know, originally the plan was for residential villas. It was a different master plan than what they've, um, come up with at this point, so. The gentleman earlier said, hey, we're not going to say one thing and do another, but. And then, uh, finally, those are the things, they're finally in my state also, they're actually through the photos. Um, they're talking about not having to, um, go to the north because, and, um, the gentleman talked about his neighborhood, the north on Bailey Hill. Well, there's also an issue that there are no trucks allowed on military highway, at least according to the load signs that are up there. Um, so there's really a burden on Leicester Town to bear for the construction, as well as once the building is complete, all of the traffic is going to come down Leicester Town. So on this side, we have some photos of the, no trucks allowed on military highway. Also from the, um, development that started already, the runoff that's going on to military highways. Building on March, also the train on March fourth. And then, um, this picture of the originals for the building that's there currently. And on the background, we'll talk about this in my next statement. There's no trucks allowed on military highway, there's no trucks, they're coming up ninety-five, can't walk on military highway. There's also the overpass, thirteen foot, five feet for the trucks there. But really, any trucks that are coming in either have to go all the way around the Walker Hill, high distance development. And then up Starhill Road, very, very narrow street to get to this single porch entrance. Or they have to come down. I just wanted to explain the photos before I got into what I had to say. Along with my neighbors who are in attendance today, I am opposed to the variance allowing a building of fifty-five feet in our neighborhood, um, and now which led to it in the meeting. The code is actually thirty feet in that area. If I'm understanding, I'm not a zoning person or expert, but it sounds like it's twenty-five feet above what is its own now. At the previous meeting, many residents of the neighborhood, including myself, did not know the full extent of the originally proposed building plans. And originally I thought maybe a shorter but longer structure might alleviate the burden of this requested height variance. Over the past few weeks, I've contemplated, uh, projects open in its entirety. So regardless of the variance maximum, the footprint of this structure will by its very design impact the character of our neighborhood. And most notably, a building height of fifty-five feet would engrossly outplays in our residential. Uh, Leicester Town Road and the other surrounding streets, including, uh, the Navy Officer Housing on Proteus Avenue are residential. And part of the reason I chose to buy my house in this area was due to the quiet charm and small-town feeling. That this area exudes despite being so close to ninety-five and the Gold Star Bridge is, um, you know, visible, but it's still quiet. And we're in a town of grown population, nearly forty thousand people, so, um, it, it really is a beautiful, quiet neighborhood. And even with the current Fairview, uh, property, the villas, um, it still feels like a neighborhood. Um, despite being hundreds of miles from their own hometown, the Navy housing also provides areas uh, families in this area, so they can find a neighborhood where their children can play outside in their yards. And I hope that it's comforting considering their sacrifice for our country. The expansion of the cottages at Fairview, despite significantly increasing traffic on Leicester Town Road, at least maintain the character of our residential area. The existing Artillist Home is the tallest building on the property. Originally constructed in the late eighteen hundreds and surrounded only by rolling landscape. A new facility with a capacity of, which they spoke as a hundred and seventy-four beds at a previous meeting, which I'm not sure, because I don't quite understand the new plan. But regardless, it would forever change the appearance and scenery of this historic area. And for perspective, the photo shows the current construction of a four-story building at the former, uh, Williams City School property. Is for reference to the magnitude of a building of this size, which will be imposed on our neighborhood. It should not be the burden of the hardship on, on the residents of Leicester Town Road and the surrounding neighborhood because Fairview wants to construct an enormous facility to increase their capacity. And a building of this size will forever change the skyline of our neighborhood. And in the very minimum, I ask the board to consider denying the variance of up to that's twenty-five feet above what it is, or even fifty-five feet. It's still, um, it's just too high anyway. The proposed, uh, proposal of the previous meeting stated that the building architecture was required so they could have a single elevator in the entire facility for all the residents of all floors, up to six floors. And I'm not sure, again, if the new, um, design is only for single elevator, but my comments are based on the previous presentation. Um, and while that design might be convenient, whether, uh, when elevator use is possible, it does raise questions about the safety of the residents. In an emergency situation where an evacuation is required and elevators are not usable. It's safe for that many residents who have mobility issues to evacuate up the sixth length of stairs. And it's no secret that elevators are expensive to install and maintain. With the underlying reason, having just one elevator in the facility truly out of convenience for the residents or to save product. At the previous meeting, it was also mentioned, there was a conservation area variance on the property. But at that time, they discussed that the variance, you know, had expired. It was like a limit on it. Again, I'm not an expert on that law, but I just wanted to mention it. Um, so potentially, I thought that land area would open up possibility building on another portion of their property. To potentially ease or eliminate the topography challenge. And then the Fairview representatives also said they were planning on creating walking trails and pathways with the woods on, on the north side of the property. Which sounds nice on paper, but the reality is that most of the elderly in the community would be challenged to navigate that type of woodland terrain, when they could safely walk the, uh, existing level sidewalks that do exist in the community. Based on the layout of the cottages, uh, the proposed straight path to the, to the new building is not really a direct path for many of the people living in the houses in the community. And it's not even talked about, but the street help for people who already live there. Would not be, likely not be accessible. A new larger facility will require more equipment, food, staff, and supplies, to name just a few. Early morning deliveries already wake up nearby neighborhood residents and an increase for, uh, demand and supply will intensify this further. And, you know, there's a lot of residents who are elderly right now with mobility issues or health issues. And, you know, there's a lot of residents who are elderly right now with mobility issues or health issues. You know, there are frequent emergency vehicles that go there, ambulances, unfortunately, sometimes there are sirens. And, you know, they used to go fast through the neighborhood because they're an emergency vehicle. So, you know, there's an increase about, concern about the noise, the sirens, speeding emergency vehicles like a downtown urban area. And there have been many occasions where I've witnessed a commercial tractor-trailer driving down Leicester Town Road gaining momentum when you come downhill, so there's Navy Housing End, there's that hill that goes right to the property. And they turned to Fairview. There's a railroad overpass on Fairview Avenue, that's thirteen-foot-five clearance, and so trucks are prohibited on military highway as there's posted signage. So direct access to Fairview and this proposed single entrance would only be possible by going all the way around the block, Walker Hill Road, the Grove Avenue by the church, and up Starhill Road. And Starhill Road at the end of it, there's a no parking zone because it's a blind spot coming down the hill. And there's often cars parked just on the edge of it, so they're just at the edge of the sign, and it's, it's dangerous currently. So I can't imagine tractor-trailers, you know, and other large vehicles and construction vehicles going up that way. Really just going to come down Leicester Town Road, which is a narrow road also in comparison. And I can't envision, again, I'm not an engineer, but the infrastructure of Leicester Town Road, I doubt was designed for that or could safely sustain this type of vehicular traffic that will increase. In addition to these concerns, many of the neighbors who were attendants of the previous meeting also witnessed the construction phase of the existing cottages. You know, goes out saying, there's noise, early in the morning till late at night, they're drilling. There's a lot of dirt and debris that flies around, and one of the neighbors on Bortsen Road, when you have the windows open in the summer because there was so much dirt coming in from the construction. And what if there's lunch on this property while this topography is challenged? They're going to be blasting. It's a major concern for the surrounding homes because blasting could negatively affect our foundations or structural integrity of our homes, which are in close proximity to the site. The clearing of the land that has already commenced appears to have affected the runoff and drainage on the military highway, again, to the photos taken on March 11th. That do show just excessive water on the roadway, parallel, parallels to Fairview. At the previous meeting, the Fairview CEO stated he had not received any complaints from the neighbors about traffic from employees or otherwise. From my perspective, in this world that we are living in, everybody's very tense. And a lot of people, including myself, don't feel comfortable making a complaint. Retaliation. We want to be good neighbors to Fairview as well. But I know that there have been voicemails left for him that were not returned because of, you know, speeding cars and the bus stop. And so I feel like it was misleading to say he never received a complaint. There being, you know, again, unreturned calls or people just, sometimes people just don't want to speak up, they don't want to mark the goal. To my understanding, Leicester Town Road and the surrounding areas are residential, not commercial. So I'm also concerned about the effect on my property value for higher-rise type buildings that would normally be in a commercial areas permitted. You know, at the last meeting, there were no leaves on the trees in the drawings that they have presented, really didn't mark the sense. In my opinion, the distraction of the view of the things from the Navy Housing. I would hope Fairview on Phyllis Home will be guided by their principles, friendship, love, and truth by respecting all their neighbors, including the military personnel, and all of our rights to enjoy the existing residential design of our neighborhood. A building of this height and size would negatively affect everyone in the surrounding area and be a disadvantage for our neighborhood. I pay my taxes for garden faithfully and hope Brown will be faithful in return to maintain our quality of life with its architecture. Thank you. Yeah, this is the only private. That's attached to the, that's on, I just wrote it off, so. Thank you.
So we have exhibit one in three parts is the post of construction. We have exhibit two is a point-of-view newsletter, and exhibit three is Leslie's.
Everybody else would like to speak?
The name is Timothy W. Sullivan. Live at Leicester Town Road. Reporter for ZM, Leicester Town Road. I have a few questions, and I do want to have a question. But two questions. Number one, traffic, have you considered traffic for this area? They have to get permission from the state somehow for the no-truck zones on the military highway. Or if they can't, that will increase the traffic. Leicester Town. Why does the question, why a hundred and seventy-four beds? That same number? Or? He says in the last time. That why a hundred and seventy? The other question I have was, the ADA has some background with the, from the ADA, but that was a poor picture. Military Avenue for forty-three years. One of the questions with the ADA is the question of I, I didn't understand how the ADA applied here, other than that felt at times that the person here was semi-threatening on a problem with the ADA. What you said about people who don't exist yet. And another question is what about seeing, what about gas, electricity, phone, cable? Are they going to get all of that there? If you got Leicester Town Road again. That area. And the last thing I want to say is, I've grown up in New York City. Forty-third Avenue. At the railroad behind the house. Harley cars in front of it. I'm used to noise. The idle wild, which became heavy after the fly zone and the void. And we, we, I'm used to noise. But we moved here because we didn't have the noise. The only noise we had was from the bridge, really. Used to that real fast. Leave my noise, that's my wife, she's probably about, always in the home, right? But anyway, that's, that's my concern, the ADA.
There are people on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand, allow you to speak if you would. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. I want to thank the members of the public, this we did miss. This, well, this evening, it just didn't pick up on all the guys. I'll try to be brief and just respond. I really appreciate Mr. Shepherd's comments. Certainly, he made an effort to try to revise the plan. I'd be good neighbors to try to respond to the concerns that neighbors in the board had voiced, and again, in an effort to compromise, try to find common ground. We certainly have no plans for this ward to provide any type of additional development to the north. That's not part of the proposal before you. It's not part of the proposal when we're moving forward with. In fact, that's not how we want to implement this. We don't want to be forced to go to the north towards your house. We would like to develop in the, in the location that we've shown on this plan. We have no intention of construction access at this time from Virgo. There are master plans, older master plans before Mr. Nelson's time with Fairview that did show connection to Virgo, that is not on our drawing board. That's not part of the plan that's before you tonight. And I hope those answers answer the questions that you have of Miss Cottrell. She made some references to a two thousand and eleven plan, which is an earlier version of a plan that was visualized for this project. And part of that plan was the development of independent living units that are at the front of the site or down the hill. And those were the villa-type units. I don't know if she has a copy of that plan or not, but the actual plan itself depicts a multi-winged complex at approximately the same location that we're showing now, but much, going much further back onto the property. And then beyond that, right up against Lewis Street, there were additional cottages. That's the two thousand and eleven plan. So we have a smaller and more compact central complex of, of wings, of buildings in the center, and we're not proposing anything for the north of the property, those darn little cottages that you can see on our. Miss Cottrell raised a whole bunch of issues. And take nothing away from the fact of the legitimacy of some of those issues. But I would remind the board of what your jurisdiction here tonight. Issue of where construction entrances are, how traffic may flow in and out of the site. Concerns about the capacity of roads, whether military highway allows trucks or not. But the overhang of a bridge upon it is. Flooding and drainage on military highway. The safety and evacuation of buildings. None of these issues are within the jurisdiction of this board, and they're certainly not relevant to the variance for you tonight. Some of those are P and Z issues. And if this project moves forward, whether with the variance or without, there will need to be a public hearing at the P and Z level where some of those issues are relevant, issues of traffic are absolutely relevant. My client will be required to hire a traffic engineer to answer just those types of questions. I do want to correct a few comments, as Cottrell said, made to the record. The actual tallest building on the campus right now is actually Fellowship Manor, it was built in nineteen twenty-five. The building height is forty-five feet, which is in excess of the forty feet that's allowed right now. So that's what we would call a pre-existing non-conforming condition. Certainly, the building that we're looking to build has portions of it at fifty-five feet, but would be higher than Fellowship Manor. But I do want to make clear on the record that historic Fellowship Manor building is forty-five feet, and that is the tallest building. There's not a single elevator in the, in the building, there are actually six elevator quarters in the proposed building as well. And right now, we have showed for demonstration and conceptual purposes, some pathways, some potential paths of recreation areas, walkways in the north end of the property. It's just a drawing at this point, it's not finalized by any means. We will have people who live in this community in the independent living don't have mobility issues. The idea to be able to walk through the site in some of the undeveloped portions may be attractive, but that's not something that is finalized, and certainly nothing that's relevant to the variance issue. Bottom line is there's a lot of generalized concerns I heard, some of them are very legitimate, but they are to be, really to be considered another day, not a year. Finally, Mr. Sullivan, I appreciate him standing up. This project will have to comply with all local traffic laws and regulations and go through a local traffic review. Property as well is likely to trigger, it's called the Major Traffic Generator Permit with the state. The state will also have second level of review of traffic. And so we are obligated by law actually to go through that process. So that will be a process that would come after tonight. We don't have a hundred and seventy-six beds, we have a hundred and seventy-six units. There's a little bit of distinction there, but that's what's proposed in the design that's before you tonight. I don't threaten, my job is to advise you what the law is. I have an obligation as a member of the bar to tell you what the law is, to tell my client, to try to explain it clearly as I can. You have an obligation, just like you do as your duty in zoning work, appeal developers, follow the law, whether it's the federal law, state law, or the local zoning work. We have addressed the issue of ADA. As I said before, as a purveyor, a provider of housing and healthcare services, we have the right to avail ourselves of the ADA and Fair Housing Act on the behalf of our current residents, who many of which will move into this building and will, or will move in the future into this building, as well as those residents who may come from the outside or who may age and be looking for purpose. You know, there are many people in this room who may eventually end up as Fairview do at some point in their lives. The issues of gas, electric, and utilities, all legitimate concerns, all for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So when we go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Rotten Public Utilities has to review our demand and our, and our discharges, they have to approve where we bring in services, how we connect to the buildings. All that's done in the planning and zoning process, which is a public process in which you can participate in. But again, that's not relevant tonight for the variance. And then finally, the issue of noise, just in a general sense. And then certainly, any construction of this property, any further development of this property, whether it's at forty feet and below, or it goes up to fifty-five feet. My client has a right, as a property owner, to develop its property under the zoning code. And there will be disturbance, there will be trucks, there will be disturbance with excavation, and there will be machinery. That is resolved through the erosion and sediment plan and the construction sequencing plan, it's part of the planning and zoning. We will process, we'll actually have sheets that talk about how traffic moves to and from the site, what kinds of day we're allowed to work, what days we're allowed to work. All of those things are all legitimate concerns, and we'll certainly do whatever we can to minimize our impacts to our neighbors. But again, that's things that are addressed. Again, I want to thank you for your time and attention tonight. We're happy to answer if you have any other follow-up questions. Hope that you'll find that there's reasonable basis to grant the variance on the physical hardships we've described, as well as the reasonable accommodation we've requested. Again, thank you for your time for both last month and this one, and I really appreciate the courtesy given to me to come back and try to supplement. Yeah, thanks, Professor. Thanks.
Nothing, those planning and zoning, they had no comment.
Anybody else have any comments or comments? Not then, we will pause the official question.
One question. Did, did they make a comment last, last time? Planning and zoning, okay.
It hasn't been, it's only been before the one.
They, they, they ever made a comment?
They had no, their comment was no comment.
No comment, okay.
I have one question about the maintain the, the height at which we would like to see it ideally now. How many units would be taken away to promote that?
How many units would be lost if we had? Keeping the same footprint or shifting to, but just the height? In other words, how many units are, are in that building that's, that you want to have fifty-five feet, for instance? I'll let the architect answer that question.
So we're looking at sixteen units in that particular. And to answer the question, slightly different. We don't believe any units would necessarily be lost. We would have to design the building and elongate it to accommodate that program. So we, we've designed it to a program with a level of square footage for those amenities or the assisted living, memory care and the units. And if we were to be denied, we would have to change the plan and go to more of the horizontal method of approaching the site. Or, in the worst-case scenario, actually disconnecting wings, so we can make more drastic height changes, which again, further challenges people taking advantage of those.
You ready there, anything else?
No, but truth is that again, our
They came and we want to variance. Looking at this is all part of the design. I instead want to variance height of the plan. Then they sensed that, that nobody had a design stage. Want to get a variance. What they have brought back a little bit better on board. I would hate to see us go through this, and all of a sudden, finding ideas others wants. Have them back doing the same thing again. Wouldn't want to see them during a design state building looking for a variance to lay with planes or things. Just like in woodwork. Because they're taking it off average nation. Little more means getting this useless experience.
I'm having a hard time with Archie. If I look at our powers under section nine, six, dash, one, B of the zoning limits, I have, would have difficulty making, finding specifically that. As the hardship here is not real.
I would also ask that you, don't forget about the ADA report.
I understand that, I don't, we haven't seen enough who I'm accommodating under the ADA. Whatever, whatever the design of this is, is going to accommodate the ADA. Because it's only created over it this year. What action we take here is not going to, why do you have any substantial result in the ADA violation? Looking at the entire R twelve district as a whole in the deal for the people that are in the small neighborhood. They were presented with a forty-five-foot building, which, which reded zone. We have zoning now and zoning commission. The maximum for this type of thing should be forty feet. We haven't seen enough hardship to help. I agree with Bruce. First time I came in way. It was me that did, actually, the the alternative moving or I think personally, that's best to
Talk about the ADA. Yes, we don't know who they are. Say as builder. That's probably
Right, but I don't believe the ADA requires us to get variance in a situation where disabilities of any potential residents can be accommodated some other way that doesn't require a variance.
Which in a way have the units apply? I think that person
No, because they can spread it out.
But then that contributes to that They lower down and go north. Probably four hundred.
They, zoning regulations allow them to do that, and they can do that without They need action by us to go higher than what the zoning regulation
This is your part, Jeff. Mr. Howard Chairman. You can, before we go on, because there's only four members here in the zoning board that feels requires a majority that are all of you to vote. Us to, the applicant, you know, you take a straw vote, a non-voting straw vote from where you are, and if it's or
Well, we could start with the
There could be five. And it's up to them, they could request that it's extending sixty-five days to make
As a point of order, Mr. Chairman, we would request that you, hearings closed, but we would request that you table your decision, that we can have a full complement of vote. Anybody who wasn't at the hearing, but to listen to the tape, make a decision.
So we close the public hearing. Need somewhere this all all
Bill answered an email today, he had a family emergency, is why he presented today. Bill?
Oh, Bill.
He had a family emergency, so he presented today. But he could have, he has two weeks to review the material. And Floyd, he's, so if he's well, he'll see. Bill did on another issue, yes.
The worst pleasure? Or by two weeks, the
I thought?
Will we vote tonight or not?
No, we're we're deciding.
April forty-fourth.
I'm going to be out of town.
Only sixty-five days. We'll have the opportunity if Bill Floyd are available to make or would you put it on the panel?
Is there a motion out there?
No motion.
Yep.
We just
Yep, requested.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Thank you. Yeah, we have.
You have?
Yes. I have no
I'll turn them back.
Today?
You know, reading
Yes, you don't, too.
Then we approve the minutes of February twenty-eighth meeting.
Roll call. Men's or, men's or sad?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
On roll call. Men's or sad?
I'm not looking at what you're
That's a correction, he's your Dan Hardy is your
No, I don't have the minutes.
Are you talking No, we're
I'm just having a
Minute call. Minutes of the which meeting?
That's the chairman
March thirteen. March thirteen.
Chairman said with your incorrect.
That's all. Men's, okay. Susan can do it, she's online, yeah, so it's, that means for men's. Well, just Yes. This one certain demon, yes.
In under eleven-one, public hearing was closed at the previous meeting, hello, March thirteen. And then the thing is, three-one. We, I'm seeing
One, and I have one. In in the motion the variance one water street in the fourth line, the word is that it's true the exception of E X, exception of revenue, A C exception. I move that we approve the minutes as amended. Which? Yeah, there is a line four. Last word. Would result in exceptional, it says it should be exceptional.
Motion by Jeff. Okay. Old business.
No old business?
No.
No, new. After, I guess new business. I just want you to go over with the contact sheet. Check your right? And there are also from Planning and Zoning Commission, they're proposing zoning regulations, so and review them and comment if you'd like.
You're going to comment in the meeting or?
Oh, you can do that for the next meeting, if you have comments, then they can take a form for it in the
What is this?
All right. Anything else? Yes? No. Nothing else?
The movement.
Are eight or seven?
I just
Yeah. Okay. Good?